Good evening and welcome to the Village Board of Trustees' June 10, 2019 meeting. Will you all please stand for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Trustee Howell.
Trustee Lee.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
Present.
Oh, Mayor Louisi. I did it again is right.
It's a Freudian slip.
Too many years.
I don't know if I...
You could be called worse than...
I don't know if I... Yeah, that's true. It's okay.
Well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have two presentations, and we're going to begin with our Superintendent of Public Works, Mr. Frank DiMarco.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have just so much to say. I don't know where to begin.
I know.
We're at the beginning.
At the beginning.
At the beginning.
No, we're gonna talk about the MS4 stormwater report tonight. I do this every year, and I talk about what MS4 really is. It's important that everybody knows what it is because it serves a purpose. And what the MS4 is, it's a report with the New York State DEC, and they want to know what we're doing to protect our waterways. And what this application does every year is explain the intricacies of what we do within the village to protect our waterways. And I'll begin with the PowerPoint. Okay. What we do when it rains, you know, a lot of people are confused, you know, where rainwater really goes, you know, does it go into the ground, does it go into our waterways? They somewhat know that it gets caught in catch basins, and they want to know what is a catch basin? But that's a catch basin. You'll see these at the curbside, at various roads, intersections, and when it rains, water just kind of finds its way into these catch basins. The roads are curved to accommodate all the water, to guide it into these catch basins on most of the roads. So what we do is we try to protect everything that goes into these catch basins. And you can see, if you take a close look, there's a medallion up above, a round medallion, and what that does, it explains that this water that comes into this catch basin goes to our waterway. And there's a number that's associated with that medallion for that catch basin. We have GIS positioning, which is global positioning for each one of these catch basins. And what that does, it tells us where it goes, and the actual condition of the catch basin, does it need to be repaired? We're very fortunate because years ago, what we did is we created a mapping of all our outfalls. And what outfalls are is a series of pipes that run up along the Bronx River, which is our waterways, and that's where all this water ends up going ultimately. But there are several outfalls, several huge pipes that are along our Bronx River. And if there's a spill at any one of these catch basins, whether it be an oil spill, fuel spill, diesel spill, all we need to know is that number that's on that catch basin, and our mapping is color-coded, so we know exactly which outfall is associated with this catch basin. And what that ultimately means is that we could protect our waterways from a drastic spill, from a dangerous spill, before it reaches our waterways. We could contain it at the outfalls and hold it there until it could be remediated. Let me just go back a little bit now. We have bathroom fixtures here. We're showing a shower, a toilet, urinal, sink. It could be a kinschel sink, it could be a dishwasher. This is what they call gray water. This goes to a processing plant. Our gray water goes to a processing plant in Yonkers. And what they do is they process and filter this gray water, so it's almost 99% filtered. You could almost drink it. But what I'm trying to do here is I'm trying to associate that there are two separate lines in our main streets. One line is for gray water, which is your toilet fixtures, your sink, dishwasher, and then you have another main line, a main trunk, which is our stormwater lines. Those two lines should never meet. They should never cross each other because they all serve a different purpose. Perfect example, and very simple. I hope everybody could read this and understand it, but I'm showing a toilet, and I'm showing a processing plant. So toilet water, sink water, dishwasher water goes to a processing plant. Rainwater goes to our Bronx River. This is what we need to prevent. We're trying to prevent crossing of our lines. We're trying to prevent gray water, which is bathroom water, toilet water, urinal water, from going into our waterways. That could create a disaster, an aquatic disaster, so that's what we're trying to prevent, and this is what we need to do. So a lot of the things that we do here annually prevent this from really happening. When new construction comes into our area, we make sure that they're tying into the proper lines. When we clean our catch basins annually, we clean a third every year. We want to make sure that there's no cross connections, and we don't have gray water coming into our waterways. I do inspect the outfalls twice a year, and I make sure there's no discoloration, no foam, nothing that would be an eyesore or flagged to me, showing me a dangerous condition. So this is done twice a year by me. And again, these are our catch basins. So the reason I showed this is because it looked like someone tried to elicit discharge oil. It looks like vehicle oil, which you can see on the bottom of the picture. But this is known to have been done years ago. So many people have done this, not realizing, because they weren't educated on the fact that this ends up in our waterway. So you could imagine the threat to our aquatic life when this happens. And this could be, it doesn't have to be just oil, it could be fuel, old chemicals that are sitting in your garage, dog poop. Listen, all of this is really harmful to our waterway. So our job is to educate everybody on how important, as ugly as these catch basins look, that these catch basins are, and they serve a purpose. This is just a picture of one of our outfalls that's along the Bronx River. I took this picture because I find it interesting. There's a tree growing above it that's about 150 years old, and it's actually protecting the pipe that is one of our outfalls. And this is another one of our outfalls that are running along the Bronx River. So if you see these while you're walking along the river, you'll know that that's an outfall that tie into all of our catch basins here in the village. We're also trying to protect our Bronx River by including a fencing that will collect all the debris and the floatables and everything that could really end up down the stream in our main waterways. So we're doing that at various locations within Westchester County. We're also having cleanup day, you know, within the village. We're trying to have that every six months or so, and it's been working out really well. I think the first time we had the cleanup day, Erin collected about 350 pounds of plastic. 350 pounds of plastic is a lot of plastic. This plastic is a very light product. This last time we cleaned, we had 675 pounds of plastic material, which has doubled what we did the first time around. So to Erin Provinzano, thank you. And this is what ultimately we want. We want clean waterways. We don't want anything harming our aquatic waterways, and we want it just to continue and sustain itself, and we could help. We just need to be all big part of this. And that's what this MS4 does, you know? It allows us to tell New York State what we're doing annually and the steps that we're taking to make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing. And that's all I really have. We do have a questionnaire on our website, on the DPW website, and I encourage people to, you know, fill it out and submit it. It's actually a big part of what we do. You can make suggestions, any complaints, any recommendations. Please feel free to go on. That's all I really have. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one. The catch basins, are there filters within the system to prevent plastic bottles from making their way out to the waterways?
What we have done, and this is a big project that I am working on personally, there's grills that they have that you could attach to the opening of the catch basins. And what these grills do is they prevent any floatables from going into our waterways. I mean, there really shouldn't be any floatables in our waterways. The only way it finds its way into our waterway is by the catch basins. You know, people don't walk by the water and drop these floatables into the water. It's finding its way from our waterway, from our catch basins, and from our stormwater lines. So we're trying to prevent that. Something as simple as putting grills to prevent these floatables from finding their way into these catch basins will prevent all of that within this village, and that's one of the projects that I'm working on.
Thank you.
I used to be able to put bags full of trash.
Just regular plastic bags?
Plastic bags full of garbage, like food, you know, like when they go to fast food places and they dump them into the trash.
You know, we all need to know that, you know, this is really illicit discharge. No one should be doing this. So I ask that if you see that there's debris on there, please clean it up if you can. If you can't, just call DPW. We'd be glad to take a ride by and clean up the area and resolve whatever issues might be there. If there is illicit discharge, if you notice that a neighbor's, you know, throwing oil into these catch basins, please just let me know. We don't want that to happen. But again, we're working on those grills, and those grills will prevent a lot of the floatables and a lot of the garbage and debris from going into our waterways. It's been proven, and it does work.
Anyone else?
That's it?
Thank you, Frank.
Okay. I just want to introduce the next speakers. These gentlemen here, Glenn Pillar, James Fong, Brian Smith, Danny Lynn, Michael Dunleavy, David Ewing. These are six interns from Eastchester High School. They're graduating soon, but they're all going into engineering programs. I usually, I started out by taking one intern years ago, then two, then three, and yes, I did have women on. I really did. I'm trying to get women working in the department at some point, but...
We're gonna get them.
It'll happen. It'll happen.
We'll make sure, Frank, that we talk to high school about that.
I should request it, but these guys, these gentlemen, did an amazing amount of work for DPW and for the Village of Tocco. They started out with an inventory of street signs for me. We never had an inventory of street signs. Names, how many signs there were, what type of brackets needed to mount them. I don't know if anybody noticed, but years ago, I think it was 2008, there was a federal standard mandating street signs to have certain specifications. But because of the recession, you know, they stopped the mandate, but they will make it effective at some point. But that's why we wanted to get a street sign inventory for ourselves. Secondly, we had changed over so many LED lights that we lost track of inventory with Con Edison. We have a running sheet of inventory with Con Edison, and you could take back six years, and you know, along the way, we've been changing so many lights that from 475 lights, we're down to 125 still remaining to be changed over to LED. So what these gentlemen did is they went around the village once again, and they took an inventory of all our LED lights, and they've also, we've been fair with Con Edison, we added lights that weren't on that list. But out of 55,000 kilowatt-hours, and that's what our bill's based on, these gentlemen saved the village 5,500 kilowatts, which is a big substantial savings. It's about, I figured it's about $1,000 a month, $12,000 a year for the village, and that's what these gentlemen have done amongst themselves. They work well together, it was a pleasure having them. Most importantly, we've been working and talking about, especially with our environmental committee, is food scrap recycling. You know, there have been several municipalities within the village, I'm sorry, within Westchester County, that have been taking on this initiative, and it's been very successful. So we've been talking about it along the way, but most importantly, I found out also that Westchester County is looking to take on this initiative, which would be a lot easier for all of us. So this is perfect timing. I think with what these gentlemen have learned, and with the county taking on this initiative, it might be a perfect segue for us to get into this program. So we met, Dave met and I, with Scarsdale, and they had a list of questions, but Scarsdale was very supportive. They've helped us out tremendously, and the amount of work that they've done to initiate their program has just been amazing. So I want to thank them for all their help. But they've been very helpful in educating us on a lot of the questions and concerns that we've had in starting the program, and of a lot of faults and issues that they had during the program, during its progression. So I'm gonna let these gentlemen talk because I think I've done enough talking, but if you have any questions, I'm here. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Brian Smith, one of the six interns. So we have a PowerPoint to... Yeah, so recently, we've been researching the food scrap recycling that other municipalities have been doing, and most notably Scarsdale, because I think they were the first ones to do it in Westchester. So they've helped a lot of other towns start their own programs, so we believe that with their help and hopefully with the help of the county, that Tocco can have their own successful program. In front of you, we have a timeline, like a speculative timeline, that we could take and a guide that we will give every citizen that starts their own program. We also have the PowerPoint. All right. So first question, what is food scrap recycling? It's a process, natural process of decomposing food and turning it into compost, which can be used as potting soil. But the most important effect that the recycling process has is taking food waste out of the waste stream. So currently, 30% of all waste that goes to a landfill can be composted, and if you take all that out, it can reduce the amount of waste that goes to landfills. And in Westchester, all of waste goes to an incinerator and gets burned, which has a negative effect on the atmosphere. So by removing that waste, we're decreasing our impact on the atmosphere, and also, we can hopefully divert some of New York City's landfill waste from landfills. Yeah. So, yeah. So the next question is, why do we need food scrap recycling in Tocco? First of all, food scrap recycling has a low impact on lifestyle and is incredibly easy, as you will see later in the presentation. And if it has any impact on lifestyle, it has the chance to establish sustainable habits by creating public awareness of how much food we actually waste. And these habits stretch from the grocery store with smarter shopping to at home by encouraging saving leftovers for later meals. And besides, we already recycle most other waste products such as bottles, cans, newspaper, cardboard, and metals, so why not recycle food? As Brian just mentioned, 30% of waste is compostable, which equates to a potential 30% decrease in landfill waste, which also thereby decreases tipping fees. Looking beyond the Village of Tocco, food scrap recycling has been successful in other municipalities, particularly in Scarsdale, as we mentioned, which has been running a successful program for over two years, reaching more than 1,200 families, and helping communities establish their own programs along the way, which is why we plan on using them as a model. And other municipalities that have had success include Rybrook, Terrytown, Artsley, Mamaroneck, and Bridgeport.
So in front of you, everybody here, we have a timeline of what we expect food compost and how long it's gonna take and all that. So our first procedure is to make people get interested in the equipment. So we have a starter kit, which will be introduced later on in the presentation, and we want to introduce this to the people, only reason to show how simple it is to food compost and to show that it takes very little in order to make Tocco a greener place. So that's our first procedure. A second is to advertise the idea of food composting. We also hand it out in a pamphlet, which shows what food composting is, a guide, which is gonna be in each starter kit, which we will again show later. We want to have posters, we want to have signs, we want to advertise this to the people. We want the people to know we want to promote food composting. This is something big we want to promote. Other things we were thinking about introducing was kids, introducing this idea to kids at schools. Hopefully, this will impact kids to tell their parents, and their parents will be involved. Other things we were thinking about were festivals or events, just walking around in a festival and saying, hey, do you know you could compost your food every night and make it into soil, make it into compost? Do something with your junk or food scraps that you normally throw in the trash. So that's procedure two. And again, we want this idea to educate the people. We want the people to know we want food compost. Why throw out your scraps when you could be using it for a real purpose? The third thing is registration and recruitment. Of course, food composting is voluntary, so not everybody has to sign up, but we want to promote this idea to everybody and hopefully change Tocco into a greener environment. So we ask people, if people are interested, to register, and we only ask for their name, their phone number, their email, and address. The reason why is because we want to keep everything organized, and we want to have information, so we shoot quick reminders and possible achievements, saying, oh, we composted 20 tons today. Let's try again 50 next time. Something that promotes people saying, you know what, I'm gonna try again that achievement next time. The fourth thing I want to introduce is a drop-off facility. We want people to access a drop-off where they could drop off their food scraps. We want to make it ideal for everybody, a place where everybody could go without any hassle or anything like that. So we want the location so people are aware to where they could recycle food scraps. The final thing we want to introduce is the beginning of drop-offs. We want to start off by drop-offs only to advertise and for people to volunteer and build the food scraps a strong base. We don't want people to just do it because we want them to. We want them to do it because they want it. So, and hopefully, if everything goes into plan, we will go to Curbside, which is even bigger. We want everybody in Tocco to be involved eventually. On the next slide, components required for startup. So first, we would need a drop-off location. As shown in the images, this is Scarsdale's drop-off, and in the first parking lot, you could see that's where their empty containers are, and in the middle is where they have like the active drop-off, so where people could drop off their food scraps. And on the right, it's where like their full containers are. And then for community outreach, first, we would need an initial press release. This would be probably announced at a board meeting or on social media, so that we get aware people that we are starting food scrapping in Tocco. Next, we would need to attend village events. This has to be continuous because if we don't continue doing this, then people will not see what food scrapping is, and they won't want to get involved into, in part of it. They would also have to attend village events, such as the farmer's market, sports games, and also the past ICS carnival. Next, they need to, you need to continue contact through social media. By doing this, you would have to like make an email that would be allowed for people to contact Tocco if they had any issues or questions regarding food scrapping. Also, you would need to make social media accounts so that people be aware of what's going on in Tocco. Next, you would have to educate students and their parents in grade school. We start doing this by introducing food scrapping bins in schools so that kids could start using them, so they get used to how food scrapping is and what they have to do in order to be successful. Next, environmental community volunteers are critical. By getting people to be involved in helping this, food scrapping is very huge. The more people involved allows it to continue and also make it successful so that it's able to keep on running for the community of Tocco.
All right. So what do we need to start off the food composting program? So at the drop-off site, where Glenn said before, you only need three parking slots, like, so you only need 20 32-gallon organic waste containers, which isn't that much for how big this program is gonna be. Eventually, we're gonna go on to curbside pickup, but that's not yet. But when we do, we don't need to buy new trucks. We can alter our trucks to become food composting pickups because in Scarsdale, the trucks weren't as big as we thought they were. They were just the normal pickup trucks. Along with that, the starter kits. These are purchased by the village, and we can provide them to the residents, as you can see here. They're not required, but highly recommended. In the residence of Scarsdale, who didn't initially buy the kits, eventually did buy the kits because they were so helpful in this program. So this first container on the top is the six-gallon container. This is the one that's stored in the basement, where you will eventually put the bags from the countertop pail into. So if you want to show the countertop pail. The countertop pail is the one that you put on your kitchen table, and as you can see on the top, it has holes, so there's no odor, and the holes on the top release the moisture, so it's dry, so it's not that heavy either. So you don't need to worry about rodents getting in or like a bad smell getting out. So if you keep this seal shut, it should be okay. So if you have the bags. So these are what you're gonna put the food into, and you could just keep the food inside the bag because you can just drop off the bag at the drop-off site because they're also able to be recycled. Yeah, that's it. But they're only $20 per family, I guess, resident, but maybe we'll go on more on that?
So we've prepared a budget for the initial costs, recurring costs, and costs to be reimbursed by the residents who take part in the program. So our initial costs are the signage of the drop-off site. Scarsdale had a large metal postage that included what could be dropped off, details, and just indication of where it is. Second part of that is the containers that we'll be using. They trap in smell and keep insects out, and they lock to keep out animals. So those initial costs total $2,900. For the recurring costs, we have the compostable bags, which total about $500 a year. Karting fees, which will be done by, carried out weekly by suburban karting. Those fees total $4,800 per year. Tipping fees are only $7 per ton, which is a third of the cost of tipping for garbage waste. for, um, garbage waste. So the more we compost, the more money is saved in our tipping fees. So that total, um, minus, uh, two thousand dollars which will be diverted from the, um, DPW waste disposal budget, totals, uh, an extra three thousand six hundred dollars per year for, uh, an additional fees for the town. For the costs for the, um, starter kits, the initial investment is three thousand nine hundred dollars for, uh, kits and compostable bags, but that'll all be refunded to the village, um, once they are sold to the residents. So, we have applied for funding, grant funding from the Department of Environmental Conservation so that hopefully that funding will subsidize our initial costs. And once Westchester County takes part in the program, composting program, establishes facilities and, uh, our drop-off sites will, for the initial, final destination for our compost will be much closer, the yearly costs will be significantly, uh, decreased once Westchester County joins in. So that's our budget. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. So what would be the planned drop-off site?
Um, for a location?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have several locations, um, we're thinking about. The great thing about it is it only needs a space of three parking spaces. So, um, uh, any, one location we were thinking of that would be ideal is the, uh, behind the library, uh, where the old bridge is being taken down. Um, that's a central location, uh, on, uh, townland, uh, and that's one, uh, one option. There are several other options we're thinking of, but no decisions yet.
Thank you.
Have you thought about, uh, or have you appealed to, uh, the restaurants in the, in the village?
Uh, so currently we, we do some, um, waste pickup from restaurants and businesses. Uh, we collect vegetable oil from them for use in our DPW trucks. Uh, this program would be mainly just for the residents, um, but in the future, if it is successful, we would, and look forward to reaching out to businesses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I just wanted to say thank you for your enthusiasm, uh, and I can see now that you're all graduates of the, uh, School of Thoroughness, the Frank DeMarco School of Thoroughness. And very impressive.
Very impressive.
Nice job. Just thank you gentlemen. Okay, moving right along, we're going to, um, we're gonna move along to the adoption of minutes, the approval of minutes of the budget adoption meeting of April twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Um, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May sixth, twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And right now that's gonna give us the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items that we have. Anyone in the audience? Yes, sir. Yeah, I know, I know. I'm going back.
Question, is this, uh, the Marble Dale Road thing or is that coming up next?
That is on our agenda, yes.
So I can speak?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see the agenda.
That's okay. It's actually, the public hearing is still open, so...
Yes, I know. I've heard the public hearing was still open. I wasn't sure if it was separate from the first opportunity. Okay. I have some questions about Marble Dale. I've had a history about Marble Dale. For those who might not know, um, I was concerned about Marble Dale back in two thousand three, two thousand four when the old King's Electronics was being re- remediated and now we have the storage, um, the Cube Smart storage that's there now. One of the things that I was really advocating back then, and it took the village six years to, uh, change, was the zoning of Marble Dale Road. And during this past election cycle, I was kinda confused with some of the, I would say the last two actually, some of the rhetoric with regard to Marble Dale Road zoning. And so my question is, there's three possibilities for Marble Dale zoned. Option one is housing. That can happen because we have a toxic waste dump site. New York State would not allow that. Option two would be an industrial zone, which we had for numerous number of years. And option three is what finally happened in two thousand nine, which was a business zone. So, I'm confused because people were railing against changing the zone from industrial to business. And I wanted to know from Gina Lee and Daniel especially because in the last two election cycles, I saw these flyers and I was kind of confused, were they against changing the zone from, from industrial to business? Or did they, um, believe it was right to change the zoning on Marble Dale Road?
Well, the zoning was already changed, as you said, back in two thousand nine, so...
But I got confused because there was, there was on some of these campaign literatures that it sounded to me they were against changing the zoning. So I'm kind of, I was kind of confused with where, where this idea was that, uh, it was such a bad idea to change the zoning back in two thousand nine.
If you remember some of the rhetoric that, um, was spoken here?
No, it was on the flyers.
Okay, but i- if, again, it was a permitted use, if you remember that conversation? So it was a master plan that allowed for those permitted uses and that is what the board may there stand on. It was a permitted use to have a hotel, a theater, uh, an office building, what have you.
So it wasn't necessarily against having a business zone.
That is...
It was, it was more what specific businesses that you wanted on Marble Dale Road?
Again, those businesses that were permitted by the master plan that was adopted back in two thousand nine.
So would you, would the village board entertain, uh, a thought of changing the list of permitted businesses then?
That's a possibility. Yes, of course.
Okay. Um, so another question I had related to, related to this, and my concern with especially the landfill site.
Specifically, which one are we referring to now?
Talking to the landfill site adjacent to the hotel.
So we're talking about, okay, the P sites, the P sites.
Exactly. With those P sites, we had a, uh, we have the potential in this, in this new development, that's what we're really discussing about Marble Dale Road. We have a potential of developing that land.
That's correct.
Specifically, uh, the land that you would see some of the Subaru cars that are next to the hotel, okay?
Exactly.
Um, now, if another developer walks into the village, like the developer for the hotel, and says, "Okay, I want to develop this land." One of the landmines we had was that, uh, the village board and the zoning board, but more specifically, I want to talk about the village board, deferred to the planning board to be the lead agency in this process. Now, you didn't understand the powder keg that was to be the Marble Dale, uh, road situation with the hotel. But my question is, are you willing, and I really want to bring this to Gina and Daniel and, and you, Mr. Mayor, are you willing to consider if there is another development, especially in those P sites, A, would you become the lead agency? And B, would, uh, would you also, uh, favor a more in-depth environmental impact statement that many of the citizens were demanding from the hotel that in a lot of ways, we were not, I, I agree with them. I don't think the environmental impact studies were sufficient. Having said that, we now have a hotel. Nothing we can do about that, but that doesn't mean moving forward. We, uh, learn from what happened three years ago and that we look towards a more robust environmental impact study if there's ever more studies. Uh, uh, if there's any more development, I should say.
Okay. First of all, there are, there are two other members of this board who you've neglected to ans- to mention, okay? That's number one. Number two, uh, I, we have gone over this, you know, as a trustee, we have gone over this environmental impact study so many times, and I guess I have to repeat it again. The Brownfield remediation program will far exceed the environmental impact study. I think that's been very well established throughout the years that this development was in the standing, in this planning stages and moving forward throughout the construction of that project. That's number one. Now, and in terms of, we're still waiting to get data back from the DEC about the P sites. So again, I am, I'm willing to bet what I have in my wallet that all these developers across the county are waiting to see what their data is going to show and then they will probably move forward with that, whatever it is that they might have in their head to do.
So if there is future development in that site, um, I, I, I would want all five, five trustees to answer this question. Would you be in favor of having the village board take lead versus the planning board?
I would defer to the planning board simply because that's their area of expertise. However, there are four other members on this board that may disagree with me.
Yeah, I think that I would probably be in favor of the planning board, of the, the village board being the lead agency, um, and I won't say that with a hundred percent certainty, but I think that because the planning board answers to the village board, that I would, I would likely be in favor of the village board being the lead agency.
So I think I would say that, uh, I would a hundred percent be comfortable saying, I believe that responsibility should sit with the village board.
My opinion is that, uh, the folks on the planning board are well-versed in that type of stuff, unlike us, so I would leave it to the planning board.
I would add that just because the planning board does not, doesn't have that direct responsibility, doesn't mean that they are not there to help and answer questions, so...
And as for me, I think that the planning board and the village board should kind of get together and figure it out.
I guess why I'm really asking this question is because it really, let's be clear, it divided the village. And I, I also think the energy that we had, which was good energy in the sense of elections, but they held the village board accountable for this. They didn't hold the planning board accountable for this. They couldn't hold the planning board accountable for this. They had to hold the electeds accounted for this. So, if there's a controversial development, um, my opinion is that the village board has to take accountability. They're the ones that are running every two years and basically saying, "This is my view of the village," or not my view of the village. And especially Marble Dale Road, which has a history. Um, I, I just want to say, now my grand village, my grand vision of Marble Dale Road and getting to the point of Marble Dale Road, is that I would not like to see any more industry on Marble Dale Road. Now, I understand there are grandfathered businesses that will still be on Marble Dale Road that are industry and we can't do anything about that. But having said that, if we are to redevelop Marble Dale Road, the vision should be businesses and if you have to figure out what permitted uses you want to put there and change some listings, be my guest. I mean, I, I think if you want to take away a hotel in the future, fine. I don't think two hotels would be great on that road. I think one hotel is, is a little bit much. But if there are other things and you want to figure that out, fine. But I would hope our vision would be that it would be a, you know, there would be sidewalks there, that there could be a streetscape there, that, that, uh, the road is, uh, not congested enough. Uh, one of the concerns I have about Marble Dale Road too, is it's one of two main, to me, east-west or north-south, north-south arteries in the village. And since we're a very small village, you know, that's not an insignificant thing. And how big is this road and how much traffic can it take? Um, and I, and I think we have to be really conscious and develop a vision of how, what businesses are there because if it's going to induce a traffic that is going to be difficult for the village residents to traverse north-south, you know, I think that's something to consider.
If I can just address, uh, the lead agency issue again, um, remember that we hired at the cost to the developer an independent, uh, environmental engineer to oversee the project. So in that regard, I, if we became the lead agency based on the information that we were receiving from that gentleman, uh, again, then again, we have to rely on the experts. You know, and as, as was mentioned, you know, by trustee Lang, we're not the experts on that. I think if I said that once, I said it a hundred times in, in the course of this whole project, uh, moving forward. And in all probability, it was a lesson learned, trust me. Trust me when I tell you this, that any developer that's gonna come forward is going to hire a PR firm before anything gets done. If that's the one thing that I learned in, in that three-year time period, is that we had to do public relations for that developer and that was very unfair to this village.
Well, in fairness, I, I will say this, that we had a situation where you, I think that, that dump site, I, I don't know, landfill site we'll call it, um, you know, had a check ered past. And it was fifty years of people saying that there was a lot of crap in that, in that landfill site. And we still don't know everything that's there. You know, they'll do the studies, they'll do what they need to do. I've always been concerned about that. I've not only been concerned about that, but I've been concerned about it across the street with King's Electronics and other businesses that are still in existence here that I would worry about if they closed tomorrow, what the impact would be. In fact, one of the ones that closed recently that I don't have a good clue on, but I'd like to know further, is Freeman Chemicals. I want to know, in that area, if there was any untoward... I want to know, in that area, if there was any untoward chemical spills because it was a chemical place. And then back in 1996, before I was here, they left canisters out in their courtyard, and the vapors went up to Greenville School. And that's, you can see that documented in the Journal News in 1996. I'm just saying, if they were that careless back then, I don't know where they are now, from what I heard, they closed, fine, but, you know, those types of things where we know that there were industrial sites in various parts of Marble Dale Road, I think it's incumbent upon us through DPW and other agencies that maybe are county or, or state-led that look at some of these places that are now turning over to the business sites.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You're not going to get any argument from me on that.
Okay.
Like I said, the lesson that I learned in those last three years, I will, I will take what I learned and move forward with that, and I will share it with the board, as I've done on several occasions, just in conversation. So anything that's going to be done on Marble Dale Road will be scrutinized, believe me. But again, when you have, what I always wrestled with, with, with the, with the public, was if the DEC was saying this, and Mike Musso was saying this, and Mike Semino was saying this, and so-and-so was saying this, why was there always that, these guys aren't telling us everything? Well, they're not right, it's not true. And that was the battle that, that we had to face. And even in correspondence with, with the DEC, that project on Marble Dale Road, in the overall scope of the Brownfield projects that go on throughout New York State, if I remember correctly, they used the word, was a postage stamp-sized project in terms of some of the other Brownfield projects that are going on in New York State. With that being said, that project got more than its fair share of scrutinization by, um, the DEC, the Department of Health. It was even referred to the EPA, and the EPA, in reviewing the documents that was submitted to them, said, "Everything looks fine, but if anything changes, please let us know." So I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think that the village did its due diligence with that project. Can we make it better? Absolutely. But also bear in mind that as that project was going on, there were community meetings that were being held with the developer that were keeping the residents surprised of what was going on down there. And even with that, there were still those contentious meetings where the truth's not being told, or you, you know, you're not doing this, and you're not doing that, you should be doing this. And, and as you said, yeah, it, it was a dividing time in this village, but, you know, Mr. DeGiorgio, we did everything that we could to keep that project up and running the proper way.
What I will say, I, I'm, and this has been constructive, but yes, the DEC may say, oh, this is a postage stamp compared to everything else, but with all due respect to the DEC and the state, they're not in six-tenths of a square mile with the highest density population in Westchester County. So, you know, when you're looking at something like that, you have to look at it in proportion.
So then who, who would we lean on then? If I, if I can't lean on the DEC, who am I going to lean on?
Well, you know, let's, let's be clear. The DEC and the EPA said everything was wonderful in the World Trade Center, and it wasn't.
Believe me, I, well...
So just because people say one thing, and I think that was part, I'm not saying it's the full part, but I'm saying that's part. When you lose your integrity, and I'm talking about the DEC now, especially back in 2001, when you lose your integrity, and when you hear from longtime village residents, some have deceased now, who have said what it was, and they witnessed what it was when they did the landfill, you know, you also have to hear their history too and respect it.
And we did, and I believe we did.
Okay. But, but I don't think you should diminish those folks.
Oh, I never, I never, and didn't insinuate that, and I did not imply it.
I'm not saying you did, but I'm saying, don't, I, I think, I think the people that came up who were very concerned, uh, were listening to long-term residents who brought this stuff up. And, you know, so the DEC comes out of Albany, and these folks were sitting right next to the landfill. Well, who the heck do you think you should believe?
But they ascertained that there were 13 hotspots, and we found that one of those hotspots concerned high levels of Freon. When they dug that site up, what did they find there? Hundreds of empty aerosol cans that were dunked by Revlon. Those cans were removed, that crater was filled with clean soil. Was it remediated? That spot was. Did we find the trains or the buses that were buried down there? Did we find oil geysers when they started doing the pilings? Not to my knowledge. I mean, again, that's where we had hired the, um, Mike Musso, right, who has no skin in the game, if you will. He was hired by us, paid for by the developer, he was working for us. So if he substantiated what was going on and the findings of the DEC, who, again, who's the third person that the village should go to?
There's, all I'm saying is, it doesn't hurt to have a healthy skepticism. That doesn't mean you're going to, you know, have to go against what they're saying, but I, I will say this, and what I, what I am saying, is that when we develop in the future, that we learn from the mistakes of the past, and more specifically, you know, what are, what is our plan when they do decide to develop? Because if, if, if what you're saying to the public is, hey, what's your thoughts on Marble Dale Road? Well, I'm giving you my thoughts on Marble Dale Road.
And I, I appreciate it, and I welcome it, yes.
And, and so I also am a political animal, as you're aware, and so I've seen how this hurt the village, okay? And I care about the village as much as anybody else in this village do. I ran twice. So if, if anyone who puts their, their feet to the pavement and knocks on doors in January, whether, whether they win or lose, they care about the village. And what I'm saying to you is that, for the love of God, make sure that you really think clearly when the next development is happening on Marble Dale Road, and more specifically, I am going to just say it, the village board needs to take the responsibility, because you guys are the elected officials, and they're coming after you no matter what it, what happens. That's why I'm in favor of you guys taking the next time as lead agency.
Can I just say one last thing, Mayor?
Sure.
Um, I think to Chris's point, you make a, a good point, Chris, that we're the elected officials, so we can't hide, quote-unquote, behind the planning board. Um, you know, I just want to speak to the argument that the planning board, they're the experts, which is, is true, we, we assume that they're the experts. However, uh, we're the ones that were elected, so I think that the, the, um, the residents will hold us accountable for the decisions that are made. Um, and I liken that to, uh, to my job, for instance. I'm the CEO for my organization. Uh, come July 1st, the CFO, I'm not a financial expert, I could read balance statements, I could read budgets, um, but the CFO makes recommendations to me. As the expert, I have to gather that information and make decisions for the organization that I think make, makes the best sense. So I think, um, to your point, which is a good point, um, the, the board is the one that's responsible ultimately. So I, I, I agree with you.
Anyone else? Well, as I, um, if I may digress, the public hearing is obviously open, um, and I will make a motion to keep this public hearing on the Marble Dale Road Design Guidelines open. Do I have a second?
I second.
I'm keeping it open. Keep it open.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And, uh, along those lines, we still have a public hearing open on the consideration of a proposed local law amending Chapter 21 of the Village Code extending prohibited parking on village streets during winter months. Does anyone in the public would like to speak on that issue?
Should we have the chief talk about that one again?
Well, if I could just reiterate what that, what that amendment involves, it's just going to extend the timeframe of no permissible parking during a snow emergency. Did I get that right, chief? No. Okay. All right, chief.
Help us out.
I know we're, I know we're expanding the calendar days.
Just a quick clarification, it's, really has nothing to do with the snow zone, it's a separate issue, is more related to the calendar. We're extending it currently, it's December 15th to March 1st. We're looking to extend it from December 1st to March 31st. That is, that if, that's for parking on the business streets, which is generally overnight, 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM to facilitate snow removal, as well as the few streets that are still left that have the actual dates of December 15th to March 31st, we're asking to extend that to December 1st.
So that's also going to apply to the residential neighborhoods as well?
Yes, but there's two prongs that is forked, so to speak, so the first is, is that we are going to extend the calendar, um, the amount of days that parking will be prohibited, with the caveat that will go to those same streets that still have that, um, prohibit, prohibited parking in effect, and offer them to change it to snow zone, which will only be in effect during a snowfall.
Snowfall.
So the streets now that are prohibited, December 15th to Mar, to March 1st, I'm sorry, those are the dates that are in effect now, um, they can't park all winter long. What we're going to offer to those residential streets is, is to open it up every single day except for when it snows.
Okay.
And the business streets really, it has, uh, minimal effect on residents because it is in, in the business districts where basically where metered parking is now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone from the public? Anyone on the board? Any of the board members? Okay, so I am going to make a motion to close this public hearing on amended Chapter 21 of the Village Code extending prohibited parking.
I'll second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And we're going to move along to resolutions. Uh, resolution number one is authorizing the adoption of proposed local law amending Chapter 21 of the Village Code extending prohibited parking on village streets during winter months. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the use of streets for the annual Gifford Street Block Party on June 15th from 12:00 PM until 12:00 AM. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing the use of the Main Street Park on Sunday, August 18th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM for the Shiloh Baptist Church Worship Service. Before I make a motion, Irene Norman, would you like to, um, speak on this?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Well, it is, um, Shiloh would like to have a, a worship service and then a small cookout afterwards. In the playground, we figured it would be a nice community event and involve the whole community, so that's why they would like to use the park and, like, have set-up chairs and whatnot in the park for worship service with gospel singing, a small, um, sermon, and then when it's all over, try to do like a cookout for the community.
So it's open to the public, is that correct, Amy?
Yes, it's open to the public. It, it's for the community, so we're trying to build a better relationship with the community. Instead of just being Shiloh sitting there on 15 Marble Place, we want to get more involved with the community. And I'm going to tell you, a lot of our members are excited about this idea.
Nice.
And we're praying that you all will approve it, and so we can try it out this year, and if it's successful, maybe continue as an annual thing.
And we did have one of the deacons, uh, Deacon...
Deacon Mervis.
Come to speak to us about it, just, um, he stressed that this is for people of all faiths or no faith, and also the service itself will be only for an hour, and then the rest is...
Right, that's supposed to be from 11:00 to 12:00.
Okay.
And then a small cookout afterwards, ending around 1:00, 2:00 o'clock.
So I just want to stress that.
So it's not like we're going to keep the playground for the whole day and keep, because you know, Main Street Park is a very popular basketball court. We have people coming from all over.
Oh, yeah.
So, but yes, that's what the plans are.
Okay, thank you, Irene. So once again, it will be the Main Street Park on Sunday, August 18th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM for the Shiloh Baptist Church Worship Service. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I love the idea.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor, and I, we will be sure to put this up on our cable, and I am sure we will once again, uh, bring this to the residents' attention at our July meeting as well.
We've got to put in a flyer.
Okay.
And what we could, what in the Westchester paper.
Resolution number five.
Number four.
I'm sorry, four. This is authorizing the use of Depot Square on Saturday, August 24th, for the Eastchester-Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce Summer Fest. The time is to be determined. It's probably going to be very similar to, to last year's, uh, activities, which was a lot of fun. Um, do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Uh, resolution number five is authorizing the adoption of a home rule request, asking the state legislature to adopt Assembly Bill Number 6473 and Senate Bill Number 5082 re-authorizing the Village of Tuckahoe to impose a hotel occupancy tax until September 1, 2022. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And just to, if I can explain again, it's just something that we have to do on a, every three years. And we, I once again thank Amy Pauling and, uh, Senator Latimer at the time for pushing that through up in Albany. Of course, we need the hotel to be open, but that's another story. Uh, resolution number six is authorizing entering into a contract with the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal Program for various village insurances and the approval of Brown &amp; Brown of New York, Inc., as the administrator of said policies at the premium amount of $2,000, $228,396.73. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And if I may comment on that, this is a savings of $46,000 from our previous, um, contract. Is that correct? Thank you, David. It's a savings of $46,000, just want to get that out there. Resolution number seven is authorizing the mayor to execute an inter-municipal agreement with the town of Eastchester, the Village of Bronxville, and the Tuckahoe, and Eastchester Union Free School Districts for street research. Union Free School Districts for street resurfacing. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number eight is authorizing the village attorney to sign a release and stipulation of discontinuance settling action with P.E. Control Services Limited versus the Village of Tuckahoe and the Supreme Court of the State of New York, County of Westchester, index Gary, would you like to comment on this before we make a motion, please?
Absolutely. So what happened was, the village was sued by our heating and cooling person that we used, the company that we used. We've since moved on to another company. This lawsuit came on afterwards. There, we had defenses to the lawsuit. Lawsuit was for about $15,500. The end settlement amount was $11,000, which I think was fair to both sides.
Okay.
We spoke with Mr. Burke on this, and Mr. Williams worked for a long time, and we feel this number's fair.
This is, is this a case of sour grapes and they were scraping the bottom of the barrel looking for unpaid bills?
I don't want to put it that way, but there was defenses to the lawsuit.
Okay. I guess I shouldn't have been so blunt. Sorry. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. I'm sorry if I offended P.E. Resolution number nine is authorizing the modification of the July Board of Trustees meeting from Monday, July 8th to Monday, July 15th. And the reason that we're going to do this is it's right, would be right in the middle of the July 4th holiday, and we thought it would be much better to be here when more people should be here theoretically. So do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And resolution number 10 is authorizing the setting of a public hearing for July 15th, 2019, to consider a proposed local law, authorizing the board to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1, 2020, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in GML Section 3-C. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And what this is, is allowing us to exceed the 2% tax cap next year. The, would be the budget year of 2020, 2021.
We don't anticipate it, though, but just...
We don't, but it's just a, you never know what's gonna happen.
Right.
Just so we're clear.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And resolution number 11 is approving vouchers in the amount of $192,334.42. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And this will bring us to our departmental reports to the board, and I will call upon Chief John Costanzo.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Just a couple of quick announcements. May 31st, Peter Costa, our new recruit, graduated from the police academy. He's starting his field training tonight. He's out there today, first day, so we want to wish him, congratulate him first for his successful completion of the police academy and wish him the best of luck in his new career with the Tuckahoe Police Department. We wish him safe and successful career.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Officer Costa.
The same weekend, the 31st through the June 2nd, was the Immaculate Conception School Carnival. Happy to say that it was uneventful. It was very successful for the church, which we're happy about, but there were no incidents that were of concern to the village. I want to thank Lieutenant Andrew Zerolnick for coordinating. There's a lot of planning that goes into that event, coordinating with our law enforcement partners, the Eastchester Police Department, the Eastchester Police Auxiliary, the Westchester County Department of Public Safety, Emergency Force, the MTA police are involved. All of us together worked very hard in the planning stages, and it was a very safe and uneventful event, so thankful to all involved. And then lastly, just Friday, we had our second annual donut tour in honor of Donut Day. We poked fun at ourselves a little bit on Facebook. I want to thank Officer James, Sergeant James Kennedy for coordinating not only the event that day, but all of the social media that he does for the department. He's doing a great job. It was a great day. We had about 50 or 60 children visit us, their parents, and we had a lot of fun.
Who ate the most donuts? Well, you can't say.
Well, that's our investigation for next year. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. DiMarco, Superintendent of Public Works.
I just want to mention, I didn't mention before, but I wanted to thank individuals from Scarsdale that helped us with the information, and that's Ron Schulhoff from the Environmental Committee in Scarsdale, Michelle Sterling, who's also on the Environmental Committee in Scarsdale, and Jeff Coleman, who's the Superintendent of Public Works for Scarsdale, and his entire staff for being so helpful. I just want to go on to mention that we're gonna start street resurfacing within two weeks. Morano Contracting, who won the bid for this year, is in Bronxville presently. They'll be there for about two weeks, and then they'll be in this area. So we'll be paving Jackson Avenue, Jefferson, Lincoln Avenue, and Crescent Place this year. And we're also working on the Underhill parking lot and do some work there as well. Winter Hill Road Project, the whole debacle with Con Edison, they started today. They should be done tomorrow with the repair on the sewer main, and we should be relining that entire section within a two-week period, but that doesn't prevent us from scheduling the paving. So right after this week, we could schedule paving and get Winter Hill Road totally completed. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you, Frank. And I see we have our recreation attendant, Mr. John Galuzzi.
Well, you know, when I come up here, I talk about events, and our biggest event the village has coming is our Tuckahoe Fireworks Show. And that's Saturday, July 13th, at Parkway Oval Field here in the village. The rain date would be the very next day, Sunday, the 14th, so knock on some wood that we're not gonna see the rain date. Our entertainment will be Showtime Dance Band and DJ Alonzo Jacobs. The music and the band will begin promptly at 7:00 p.m. Also performing will be Tuckahoe's own singer and songwriter Joshua Crumpton and Gina Pierce. Our co-EMC for the evening will be Johnny T. The fireworks display is by Grouchy, and they'll shoot off at 9:30 p.m. that night of July 13th. There'll be plenty of food vendors, of course, the Walters Hot Dog Truck, Wood Fired Pizza Truck, some tropical drink trucks, and some ice cream, of course, Panegelato, I believe, will be there, and pastry from Nutmeg here on Main Street. The Tuckahoe Fireworks Event is brought to us by the Village of Tuckahoe and sponsored by many of our local merchants, and we're very grateful over the years that our merchants would contribute so much to support us, and their generosity each year is appreciated. The Grouchy Fireworks is paid for by the Generoso Pope Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galuzzi. We lost power here.
Testing.
Hello? We're off. Thank you, Mr. Galuzzi. Okay. Camille.
Just want to remind the residents that the first half property taxes have gone out, and they due June 30th.
Thank you. Mr. Gertson, do you have anything for us?
Nothing on my end tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good, thank you. Mr. Burke?
Couple of things. When speaking about Marble Dale today, I've said this for the last 18 months, we've been in constant contact with the DEC in regards to the P sites issue. I was told that the DEC and DOH were supposed to sit down onsite together and make a determination in the month of June. Again, I hate to say that to the board, I hate to say that to the public, because for the past 18 months, we've been hearing the same thing.
Right.
But again, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that we are trying to keep on top of it, and we're trying to, you know, we want to know what's going on here as well.
Thank you.
Interesting one, it's on our village website, but Suez Water has applied to the Public Service Commission for a rate increase. What's interesting about this one is, is that it would actually be rate decrease for the Village of Tuckahoe and average use. I wouldn't open your eyes too wide yet, I doubt that's ever going to happen, but it actually is a, it's a good site where they're not looking to get a 10% increase. They're, how it works is, there's, with Suez, there's a lot of different areas that have different rates, and what they're looking to do is just combine all those and have one rate for everybody, and that looks like it would be a net benefit for our area. If anyone is interested in hearing about Suez Water, they actually have a public hearing open, or informational forum, what they call it, at the Rye City Hall tomorrow night at 7:00 o'clock. So if anyone's interested in that, they can go over there and listen to Suez Water. I'm not sure if anyone is, but that's, again, that's on our website if they're looking for that. Not much in regards to the Elm Street Bridge, they are working on it. We do have an onsite meeting. We were promised about two months ago that we're gonna have onsite meetings every two weeks. We're gonna start that off tomorrow, so members of the Public Works and the Police Department, myself, will be out there at 11:00 o'clock, looking at the bridge, trying to figure out how this is gonna move forward, and hopefully have more information next month for everyone.
Well, you know, that one day, they did more work in one day than they have done since before Christmas, so, just so the public knows, they put down three or four concrete barriers that covered the opening, the space, and then the following day, I saw the laborers there, they were filling in with concrete, but that's it, I haven't seen them since last week. But it looks to be like a significant change from what it was. And then again, they still have to do the other side.
And that's the most important, is right now, we're looking to figure out when they're gonna finish the one side, and if they have to go over and have it, you know, closed going the other way. So that's the most important to get out there, so that's what we're really looking to figure out.
But, you know, it just seems like in one day, they had that, they got it, they had it done. You know, they had so much equipment onsite that day, but anyway, it's the county. And miscellaneous business, as we mentioned earlier, our next regular village board meeting will be held on July 15th at 7:00 p.m. here in Village Hall, which now will bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and I'm gonna start with Trustee Andino.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna try to keep this short. As I say every month, the library offers a lot of free programs. If you want to see all of the programs, you can go to tuckahoe.com backslash library. I do want to just highlight a few things. On Saturday, the library had its annual fundraiser, the Westchester Symphony Orchestra performed there, which was a great success. From what I hear, the library raised about $2,500. I think Trustee Howell will give a more detailed report probably next month. The library also honored and recognized Mayor Eklund for his support of the library with a plaque, so congratulations to Mayor Eklund. There are, the details for the summer reading program are, you can find that at the library and also at the kickoff, the summer kickoff, reading kickoff party on June 24th at 6:30. I will be also doing another cooking lesson on June 26th, so I invite everyone out. Let's see, there was Father's Day. So on June 11th, which is tomorrow, at 4:00 o'clock, the kids will be doing some crafts for Father's Day, so we invite everyone out to have the kids, ages four to 10, do some arts and crafts for their fathers. The, let's see here, the adults, Friends of the Tuckahoe Library meet on Monday, June 3rd at 7, I'm sorry, meet the first Monday of every month at 7:00 p.m., so they're inviting new members to come out and to become a friend of the library. Also, there will be a meet the author and book signing with author Miriam Parker on Wednesday, June 19th at 7:00 p.m. And, let's see, so I think that those are the major highlights. Again, you can go on the website and get more information. I do also want to just reiterate a thank you to the gentlemen who came and did their presentation, the interns. I was really impressed. I would love for them to join us at the Environmental Committee Superintendent, if possible. They gave a lot of insight to some of the things that we've been talking about, and just so that the community knows, Tuckahoe does have an environmental and sustainability committee, which we are formalizing currently. We've been meeting for a while, and I know David is anxious to get us more formal, so we are working on that. We're close, though. We're close. We have Donald here, Crosby, who's played an instrumental part in the committee, so I just want to thank him. And I just want to wish everyone a Father's Day, all the fathers, brothers, uncles, godfathers, stepfathers, and anyone who plays a role in a child's life, Happy Father's Day.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lang.
Thank you, thank you. So it was pretty busy. We had a bunch of events we attended to the last couple of weeks. I'd like to start by talking about this year's VFW Memorial Day Ceremony. Mr. Pinto, Eastchester High School and the VFW put on a wonderful, another wonderful evening. Then there were those special three words they wanted for us to come away with, remember, respect, and reflect. So it was another great evening, and a wonderful singer. I forget his name, I apologize. I would also like to thank Bronxville's Mayor Mary Marvin for the invitation to join her in this year's Memorial Day Parade. The weather was perfect for a nice walk through the village, so that was nice. After the parade, my, the mayor, my son and I had the great honor of riding along with the tireless members of the Eastchester VFW as they lead reefs at monuments throughout the village. And that was, that was just wonderful to be a part of, everybody. They do that every single year, and we could actually follow the trolley around in your car just to pay respects for all the, you know, soldiers that we lost here in the village. So thank you to the trolley full of vets for making room for us, right? That was great. Also, I'd like to make special mention of a group of people I had the privilege of joining in a candlelight vigil just across the street from Town Hall. This was a community-based support group right here in Eastchester called the Eastchester Care Coalition. You can see them at loveneviggivesup.com. Their focus is opioid addiction, alcohol addiction, mental health awareness, and most of all, connecting people with help. It was just, they were extraordinary young group of ladies that spoke that evening. They were wonderful at conveying their message, and it was just nice being around so many neighbors and young people determined to make a difference. So that was super special. Thank you for, thank you Theresa Nicholson for that invite, that was, that was great. I won't ever miss that. And yesterday, the mayor and I enjoyed a wonderful morning at Leroy Gregory Post, where the Boy Scouts held their inaugural Veterans for Scouting Breakfast. And it was nice to be part of their very first event, honoring Mr. Vito Pinto and Mr. Michael Fix, two very well-deserving veterans. And, yeah, lastly, I want to mention the resurfacing and painting of Parkway Oval Basketball Courts has been completed. It was a project approved by Supervisor Colavito and the Town Board and fully paid for by the Town Board as well. So that's always good news for us. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.[1745.91]
And that's gonna be, is gonna be ready to be used on Monday?
It's ready to right now. Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yep. I believe it's ready to go right now.
But it looks great if you get the opportunity. They did a really good job down there. Trustee Howell.
Uh, I'd also like to, um, say that the, uh, memorial that was held at Eastchester High School, put on by the veterans, was really unique. It's, it's done in a very great way where you walk away with, you know, not only the history of the battles that were honored, but also of the local residents who fought in them. So it was really a, a unique memorial. So I'm, uh, gonna report this evening on some of the activities of the planning board, which after, uh, you know, a quiet month is now hopping. Um, so there are, um, I'm gonna speak only about the active items. There's one adjourned item on the agenda for this month. Um, at eighty-two Wallace, we are looking at, um, the return of, um, what's been an ongoing discussion for construction of a new apartment building. I was just reviewing the, um, plans with Gary right before the meeting and it's, it really looks like it's gonna shape up to be a beautiful building, um, and, and do a lot for the appearance of Wallace Street. There will also be, um, a return discussion of the, um, about removing the smoke stack at one Scarsdale Road, which is Riverview. Um, just a little history behind that. Um, when Riverview was originally developed, part of the promise was that Riverview would, uh, retain the maintenance, uh, of that smoke stack and they'd report annually to us. So about two years ago, uh, they came to us and, uh, had not reported on that for five years and said, uh, the smoke stack was now in disrepair and it would be way too expensive for them to remediate it. So, um, that's an ongoing discussion. There will be a site plan proposal for twenty-one Columbus Avenue, which is the site of Epstein's, and that's gonna be for a daycare center, which would, um, be able to house a hundred and seventy-five students and twenty-nine teachers. There will be a proposal, uh, for a site plan on seventy-two Main Street for a new cafe. And this would be, this is the former location of the E forty-two Cafe, and this would be to add a kitchen. And, uh, there will be a site plan proposal for one-twenty-five Marble Dale Road, and this will be to add a new indoor sports facility, which would be batting cages. And the last item is an architectural review, uh, for ten Fisher Avenue, which we all know as Martine's, um, for an awning upgrade. So, um, uh, that'll be June eighteenth, the planning board meeting at seven-thirty P M. if folks are interested. And just, uh, one last comment on, you know, the planning board. Uh, I just wanted to make sure people understand that the requirements to be on the planning board are, that you have to be a citizen of Tuckahoe and, um, you know, you can't have a criminal record. And, and, and that's, that's basically the requirements, which happened to be the requirements for being a trustee as well. Um, so, you know, while we look for people with experience, I want to tell you that when you get trained for planning board at the Westchester County, they actually encourage, um, governments to have a, a diversity of people on their planning board, to not only have architects and construction workers, but actually the most effective part, uh, or characteristic of a board are people who are enthusiastic. So I just want people to understand that, you know, there is no requirement for expertise other than being an enthusiastic citizen on any of these boards. And while boards should always look to experts for, um, advice, the job of an elected official, the responsibility is to carry out, you know, what is best in the best entrance, interest of your constituents. So I just want to make sure we understand the difference between those two roles. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Howell. Trustee Lee.
Good evening. First off, I wanted to congratulate the Tuckahoe Tigers varsity baseball team on a great season and advancing further than they have since two thousand fourteen. Section one champions and regional finalists. Their future is looking bright. I also want to congratulate Austin Pope, a former Tuckahoe Tiger, putting Tuckahoe on the map. Austin was drafted by the Arizona Diamondbacks in the fifteenth round this past Wednesday. We wish you all the luck and success on your new journey. I bet we will be seeing lots of Diamondback hats and shirts around the village soon. All right, let's talk about our senior citizens. At the, at, uh, Winterfest. We have to give our Bronxville High School seniors, the Bronxville High School seniors a big shout out for hosting a fun-filled afternoon of line dancing, bingo, and pizza with our senior citizens. Also, a big thank you to our coddle students inviting the senior citizens to the school for a spring concert and luncheon. I loved that they were transported by our Tuckahoe trolley. On June twentieth, there will be a luncheon at the Seashore Restaurant on City Island for the senior citizens. On June twenty-seventh, the new executive board takes oath with Mayor Luise, followed by a meet the mayor discussion. He will be available to discuss issues concerning Tuckahoe residents. And lastly, it's funny, Irene said this today. Lastly, since today was a washout, but we did have beautiful weather, and I have to say, I love to see all the new plantings around the village thanks to our D P W. And I also love to see our basketball courts utilized by so many kids. My husband was once one of those same kids when he was their age playing basketball in the Bronx. The park looks great with all the improvements made by the prior administration and trustees. Let's do everything we can to keep the parks in the vill- village in great shape. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And I will try to keep this as short as possible. And, um, you know, this was, um, we did honor our veterans and I was at the Tuckahoe High School last week. Um, they had a ceremony on the football field and every student in the school attended this ceremony. And I was just so impressed, um, by the students that participated. There was a, a string and ensemble that performed. Um, there were two choruses that performed. And of course, Mr. Sandy Groofy provided music as well. But every, every coddle student was there, every middle school student was there, and every high school student was there. And of course, our veterans were also in attendance that day as well. But it was just really a, a moving and beautiful ceremony. So I would just like to thank them for their appreciation of our veterans. Um, to piggyback off of Frank, uh, the gas blowers, leaf gas blowers are prohibited in the village from June first through September one. So please tell your landscapers or if you have a gas leaf blower that is prohibited in the village. And the key word here is it's a leaf blower. So I don't anticipate any leaves on the ground right now. Um, so please be mindful of your neighbors, be mindful of the environment, and be mindful of the noise that you're creating with those leaf blowers. I also would like to remind all the residents of Tuckahoe, as well as the business owners, that I continue to maintain office hours here every Wednesday from ten o'clock on, uh, depending on who, um, comes into Village Hall that day. I will be here for as long as I need to be here. If anyone cannot be here on a Wednesday, please call, uh, Village Hall, speak to Jackie, and I will get in touch with you within twenty-four hours and we will make another arrangements. And, um, I would also like to congratulate and wish all the graduating classes of two thousand nineteen. There's a big wide open world waiting for you out there. So best of luck in all your endeavors. And if I can echo what, um, Trustee Andino said, as every father knows, every day is Father's Day. But for all the res-, um, all the fathers in Tuckahoe and as Trustee Andino said, have a happy Father's Day.
Celebrate one day so they can make some money.
Yes, that's you. That's right. And that's all I have. And this will bring us to the second opportunity for anyone to address the board on any subject. Yep, Mr.?
Good evening. Anthony Fiori from Biddle Place. Forgot one thing. There is a zoning board meeting this Wednesday night for twenty-one Columbus for a special use permit. That's all we got that night. Just one thing. Uh, I hate to bring this up again, but the hotel. Is there any work going on in there? Cause they wanted to open up hopefully by summer. Doesn't look like it's doing anything.
Uh, the last information that we received, uh, was October. Um, that's when the anticipated opening date is, is October.
Actually, they came to the chamber meeting a few times. They wanted to open in the summertime, but I guess things been...
They were supposed to be open in May as well. And I think they were supposed to be open after the holidays. So I can just keep going back.
Okay, that was it. Thanks.
It's the hurry up and wait syndrome. Anyone else?
Hmm.
Yes, sir.
Hi, uh, Harmit Guendi, one thirty-five Oakland. Uh, first of all, I would like to congratulate them. They did a great job. Very professional presentation. So good job Frank and the kids. Uh, I am here basically because I have a concern. I'm concerned about short-term rentals and Airbnb in the village. Past, past few weeks, I got calls from, uh, residents of the village and they were basically unhappy with Airbnb in the neighborhood, right? And they didn't know what to do about it, how they can stop it. And it, it is a problem, right? No one wants Airbnb in the neighborhood. You know, you have strangers as your neighbor or strangers coming in at odd hours, at odd times, parties, loud noises, and, you know, perhaps other unsavory activities. So, and I think the biggest problem is, um, in a neighborhood which has Airbnb, the property value goes down, right? So no one wants that. So basically what I want to, uh, ask the board is, is there anything that you are doing about it? Can we do something about it and sort of pass law and more importantly, enforce it?
Well, this is probably, I, I know personally, this is probably the second time that I've been approached, uh, about Airbnbs. The legality of prohibiting it, I would imagine I would have to ask our village attorney, can you do that, number one? Number two, and I think this is probably more the crux of the problem, is how would you go about enforcing that, that ordinance if we did in fact pass one prohibiting Airbnbs? But again, it's a conversation worthy of discussion. I would, I welcome feedback from the community on that because I am sure that there will be some people on the other side of the fence that are going to say, why are you going to tell me I can't rent my apartment or home out to someone? So again, I, I'll ask Gary on, on his opinion, initial opinion on this.
The legality of it, I, I haven't researched it, but I know other municipalities have tried it. It's a fight that, um, would probably take up the budget of the village to fight. Um, I know Mr. Burke, I think, is looking to maybe registrations, um, so we know who's doing it. Um, you know, if there's parties or loud noises, they all still have to comply with the village ordinances. So we have a little bit of, uh, control over that. But right now, there's, there's not much I don't think we can do about the Airbnb. But, um, and, and that's without researching it or...
Right, right. But I think it's something that, you know, again, seeing as it's been brought to our attention, I think it is something that we should, you know, begin to explore to see what and if, what we can do.
Are we aware of any other municipalities that are currently, um, you know, going through this suing?
Well, I think there is a problem.
No, going through, through the courts?
Oh, not, oh, I don't think, I don't know if there's any...
Has it reached any, um...
I'm sure it has. I don't, I just don't know.
I see.
Um, but I think it's a problem nationwide.
Sure.
Um, just to let you know that this is not a subject that we don't know about. Um, my administrators group have been looking at this for, you know, for quite some time now. And again, the enforcement of outlawing it probably can't happen. Um, but what a lot of communities are looking to do, and it's kind of being researched right now, is what parameters can be put on. So if there's a registration process, um, a homeowner would have to register. And if there's any type of other, um, restrictions can we put on these things? Like you can't rent it out for more than, you know, one, I say, it needs to be full weeks or what those types of thing is. And then it's also like if there's a noise ordinance, the first one's a warning and the second one's a, you know, substantial fine. Those types of things that we're trying to look into. That way, um, also not having an absentee, you know, we'll call landlord, but having someone rent out their, their, their home and then just completely go away. We want to be able to have the registration of who we're gonna be able to call at eleven o'clock at night when something's getting out of hand and they need to be there within one hour. Otherwise, they're fined. Um, so those are the types of things that are being looked at right now. Uh, I know of a couple other communities that are looking to see the legalities of that. And again, I think that we're kind of waiting for some of those other communities that are, are being affected a little bit more than we are. But it's definitely a hot topic out there and it's definitely something that needs to, it's gonna be, needed to look at more intently here in the village, you know, in the coming months. There's no doubt about that.
So on the surface, the prohibition of Airbnbs...
Yeah, it doesn't look like...
Is very restrictive.
Yeah, it doesn't look like we're gonna be able to do that. And again, somebody mentioned property rights and things like that. So it's, yeah, it doesn't look like we can restrict it, but having some sort of registration process, um, to make it even, you know, maybe even a little bit more difficult, having some parameter set up that way is probably the best way to go about it.
Have there been issues, um, in the neighborhood that you're referring to?
Yes. Uh, yes, there have been issues in the sense that there are people, I mean, it's a family sort of, you know, our neighborhood, this is a family neighborhood, and there have been issues that people are not comfortable with. And, I mean, you know, so that's why, you know, I got the calls and they didn't know what to do. I mean, the fact, the thing is we have ordinance about land, you know, leaf blowers in June, and we don't have ordinance about this. Uh, Florida, I know for a fact that in Florida, it has, in many counties and municipalities, it has been banned. So you just can't have Airbnb there. I don't know how Florida laws are different from New York State, but, uh, I'm hoping that you guys can do something about it. Because we forget the, the unsavory element of it. I mean, the property value, it affects it. I mean, there have been studies, six to ten percent over long term. No one want to move in a neighborhood which has Airbnb. I mean, you won't, I won't. So I'm hoping that you guys can do something about it.
It's, well, it's something that we'll look into.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for bringing it to our attention as well. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Christie, Georgia, fifty Columbus. And also, I'd like to, uh, echo the comments about the wonderful presentation by the young men here. Well, that's there. Um, this is a more touchier subject, believe it or not. I've, I've landed one landmine tonight, tonight. So let's, let's throw the second landmine out there. And that is the lack of debates that we had during, uh, March or February. All I'm asking is that we really make a commitment from both sides that we have a debate. Now, I don't know what happened, uh, with regard to why, why we didn't. I know from the Democratic side that, uh, there were inquiries about it and it was dropped somehow. But I would really encourage the village, um, and, you know, we have a bipartisan board here. So I think it's possible that, uh, the people on this board really work with the chairs to connect with the League of Women Voters, uh, to, in an early stage, hopefully in early February, to have a debate, uh, end of February, early March. We've had debates before. I think it's very important in the, for the future of this village, that people know who they're electing. And it's nice that we have the flyers and we have the mailings and those sorts of things. But I, I also think there are people that are not reached by door to door. Some people from, that are in apartment buildings. It's hard to get into certain apartment buildings. They have the community, uh, television that they can see it. And it would be wonderful if it was on, uh, the, uh, website, uh, after, after it's done. But I really am asking for a commitment from the five of you here. You all have to run again, or maybe you decide not to run after this term, but that you, uh, encourage your committees to really have a debate again. Or if nothing else, uh, an, an event where we're at Village Hall, and Village Hall would have to host it. So that's why I'm bringing it to your attention, where, uh, people, uh, even if it was just, uh, maybe not even the traditional debate where we had people coming to the podium and asking questions, but that there's questions to be asked. Um, I just think it's diminished these last two years, um, that we haven't had a real forum about the, uh, the candidates and what they stand for. And part of the reason I was asking Gina and Danny, you were asking about, well, there's the other five. I at least know their positions. I got confused frankly from the flyers last time with regard to that question about the zoning issue. And for me, especially the work I did to convince Mayor Fitzpatrick back in two thousand nine to have, uh, a, uh, master plan committee, and he was all in favor of the master plan committee. I really stressed with him from two thousand four to two thousand nine, I stressed with him, Mayor Fitzpatrick, I said, there is no business that in Tuckahoe, we should ever have an industrial zone. I said that back then. And that's where that came to fruition. I say that to you because I at least have had community involvement, but at least allows other people to have communications like that, where we could really think about the future of the village. So I, I'm just saying, I encourage you, Mayor Luise especially, uh, to talk to the Republican side. You know, I'm involved in the Democratic side. I will work my darndest to have, uh, but it takes two to tango here, frankly. So, uh, this is my op- So this is my opportunity to say to you, as an elected, the importance of us having a community forum, so we know who we're electing.
If it's any consolation, and, and, and this will be, I'm going to go on record, this will be my last comment on this past campaign and election. There was a scheduled meet and greet with the community at ECAP on a particular day, and it was canceled six hours before that was to take place. So let's be fair, we were all going to be sitting in the same room at one point in time, and as you suggested, it doesn't necessarily have to be a debate, and it was going to be in a community forum. We were all ready for that, everyone up on this board. We didn't pull the plug. And again, it's an issue that I, that does not need to be discussed, it's water under the bridge. But to say that we did not want to have that conversation is not true.
I would respectfully say, the ECAP thing is wonderful, and that should happen. And when I ran the first time in two thousand three, I went to ECAP, I went to the library, and I also was here in Village Hall. So it's nice that ECAP is doing it, and I encourage that. The more the merrier, but I also think it's important it's televised in Village Hall.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that being no further business, I will make a motion for the board to go into executive session for personnel issues. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Until next time, Tuckahoe. See you in July.